Turn your mics on.
Yeah, I got those two.
Tim, you gonna turn your mic on? All right, six o'clock, I'm gonna call a meeting to order, would all please rise for the flag pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight, first thing I'm gonna do is introduce our staff and board members. Off to my right we have Adam Osfort, Sue Bertrand, I'm Jim Pratt, got Ken Hovit, Roger Hendrickson.
Yeah, I got those two. Tim, you gonna turn your mic on? Do it anyway.
All right, six o'clock, I'm gonna call a meeting to order, would all please rise for the flag pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What are you gonna do with it? Like to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight, first thing I'm gonna do is introduce our staff and board members, off to my right we have Adam Osfort, Sue Bertrand, I'm Jim Pratt, got Ken Hovit, Roger Hendrickson, Andy Watlin, Lloyd Graves, and Commissioner Tim Denny. First thing we need to do is approve the minutes from the last meeting, any additions or corrections? Everyone look them over.
I've moved to approve.
We got a motion by Ken, is there a second?
There'll be.
Second by Roger, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Uh, there's no changes to the agenda, so can we get a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Set Roger.
Yeah.
Second.
Yeah.
Lloyd.
Lloyd, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Agenda item number one is Todd County Ordinance Amendment, Section 505, conditional use permits. And we will have the staff report.
Sure, just a brief staff report here, um, what we're looking at is amendment to Section 505, conditional use permits, the background here is during the, the July 16th, 2024 Commissioners' Board Meeting, Work Session, there was discussion amongst the commissioners about the need for applicants to obtain the other permits that may be required for whatever land use they're requesting prior to the applicant submitting the CUP application to the county. Uh, inclusion of this will require would assist in the decision-making process to determine that all of those other requirements are being met prior to the county board decision. Have some draft language here, um, currently just proposing it as, uh, Part G, so everything below that would slide down a letter, but the language would read, "In addition to a complete, conditional use permit application, the applicant shall submit verification from all other federal, state, and local permits that all other federal, state, and local permits have been obtained at the time of application." Uh, other permits to be considered include, but are not limited to, DNR water appropriation permits, MPCA stormwater permits, MPDES permits, and local watershed district permits." Just some things to help with discussion here, um, what are the permits that we would expect to be obtained prior to the application, um, when each land use will have a different permitting requirements? How does this impact the landowners wanting to apply for a conditional use permit, when the permits will need to be obtained either way if the CUP is approved? Uh, how would this ordinance amendment apply, be applied in situation where state agencies do not issue permits until county approval? And then just think about any other unintended impacts of the proposal. Uh, Part F that goes right before it reads that the applicant requesting conditional use permit shall submit to the director a full and complete, uh, conditional use permit application form provided by the director, this application should not be considered complete until all the requirements of the application have been met and any application fees have been received, so this would just be that next part below that of additional requirements for the application. That's what we're looking at, and that's my brief staff report on it.
Any correspondence?
We had none written on this one.
All right, at this time we will open it up for public comment. Uh, you'll have a three-minute time limit, when I call on you, come up to the podium, sign in and state your name, so we can have that for the record.
My name is David Tomchee, I'm the owner, I live in Todd County and I'm the owner of Dairy Ridge, I actually think this ordinance is incredibly complexifies the whole process. The CUP process right now, when we get a permit now with this CUP goes to the commissioner, they're all conditioned currently, they're conditioned that we get the appropriate permits, the project doesn't go forward without. My digester project, for instance, as a single example, this is probably $250,000 of permitting that's already been done on that project, and then to bring it to the county here so that somebody can arbitrarily and capriciously emotionally say no because they don't like it, or they don't like the owner, I think that's going in a very bad direction. You, there might be very wealthy companies in Todd County that can go through some of this person, permitting process in advance and hope that they can, they can succeed here at the, at the vote level, here at the, at the board level, but you, you take a small, a small businessman that, or businesswoman who has to undergo, do all this permitting first, and then to come up here and be shot down, I think that's a terrible mistake. It, it, this is, this is business negative, in my opinion, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Roger? All right, Roger's astral, um, on behalf of Todd County Farm Bureau, at our last meeting, we talked about this ordinance, and besides, we figure it's pretty much anti-animal agriculture to start with, but the example came up of, we know of somebody that is looking at buying a business, they wanna add on a kitchen to this business if they would buy it, and this area needs the business to keep something within 10 miles of them for groceries and stuff like that. To open that grocery up, they have to get a state pollution discharge permit apparently, if you're gonna run a kitchen, I don't know anything about this stuff, but anyway, they have to get a state permit for that, if they would buy this business, they're gonna have to get a conditional use permit, the way I understand it, to open this up there. That permit is over $500, I was told, um, if they've gotta do this, that basically is gonna keep them from buying this business to keep it open for the people of this local area, that's what they were looking at. And if people have to go get all these permits, how is the board gonna be able to turn them down when they come up here for a zoning permit, if they come in and have all these permits? You're gonna have no grounds to turn them down for any reason, and they already have, you have to do all this stuff if you've come through this board and get the conditions, all this stuff goes on as conditions, you've gotta get that done anyway, so why do we wanna keep, basically, like David said, this is basically an anti-business deal, we need tax money, we need new businesses in the county, if they've gotta get all these permits and then have the chance of getting turned down, and some of these permits, I know, I, we're looking at it as a business side, let alone the livestock side, but to get these permits is a lot of money to spend, to come in and then have somebody come in and shut you down because they don't like you working harder than what they wanna work. Any other public comment?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, that's a comment. Yeah, sign in, state your name.
My name is, uh, Jim Seitzer, Belinda and Jim Seitzer, we're here today, we represent the property right across the street where this is being built, and these two gentlemen came up here and they were talking about businesses, and our thought was they're building a couple of sheds and a house, not a business, um, so there's two different things going on here, is, we're asking, is there a business that they're going to, uh, build on this property?
We're, we're, we're talking about the addition to the conditional use permit right now.
Yeah, so the Taylor Woods item will be, I don't know what number it is on the agenda, so when you have, when we have that item come up specifically.
Okay, so this is a different.
Completely independent of Taylor Woods, we're not discussing that at all at the moment.
All right, I appreciate that, thank you, thank you.
Item number four.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? You can come on in. Any other public comment?
Nothing planned to say, but I'm kinda looking through these other CUPs, we got a CUP for farm produce, commercial sales, we have a CUP for, um, shop space, we have a CUP for custom machining repair and job shop, let's see what else, we have CUP for an example, expansion of an existing feedlot, and a digester, so you have all these CUPs in front of you tonight, and I am pretty sure that for farm produce, commercial sales, you need some additional permitting from the state, if you're storing, um, any sort of fuel or, um, you know, dumping, like if you have a car garage or whatever, and you have oil, you need a permit from the state, um, all of these will need the permit from some other entity, and I do want you to think about, as you have this written right now, or how this has been produced, is that it impacts every single CUP that comes through the door, not just feedlots, or not, whatever's convenient at this time, so that's all I really have to say, I have to, uh, back up, um, the cost and the deterrent to businesses in Todd County, uh, those will be true deterrents, um, I've heard them from other counties in the past, um, our people, businesses calling our county in the past and asking, um, what is it gonna require for us to establish ourselves in your county, and sometimes they'll choose to go to another county because of this reason or that reason. I wanna keep Todd County strong, and I do hope that the decisions made throughout this process really consider every single CUP applicant that potentially could be out there, and how you may be impacting their lives and their businesses in our communities. That's all I have.
Any other public comment? If none, we'll close the public comment period and open it up for board discussion.
I suppose I have a question to start out here, um, the third bullet point there asks how this ordinance, or how would this ordinance amendment be applied in situations where the state wants the county approval before they give their permit out? Uh, do we run into that often?
We don't run into it a ton, but there are scenarios where, I have one example that comes to mind, uh, we had a conditional use permit for, um, little business on the south end of Long Prairie here, where they wanted to open, uh, like a barber shop, and whatever agency they get their licensing from, they have to, before they, state issues their license, they have a form that they come to the county and sign off that all the appropriate permitting has been obtained before the state will issue that license, in an effort, I think, to protect the county, make sure that permitting is handled, so in those situations like that, you have this, uh, who goes first scenario, um, I don't know how that would then be applied here, in those scenarios.
And then, if we think ahead a little bit, we, uh, we have a cannabis ordinance coming, there's gotta be a ton of state permits and licensing going on there too.
Oh, yes.
And who's gonna be first in line, so we have, I think we have some issues to work out here, before we get too carried away here.
Anyone else?
Well, there was one statement, I think, uh, two of them made that, uh, you know, vote against it or whatever because you don't like the person, and we had Andy here just started, well, just your third month, I think, and I told him, when he was here at the meeting previous to that, I said, "Couple of things," and I'll mention one, I won't mention the other, but I said, "When you come in to look at this stuff, you gotta forget how you feel, you gotta go by what the laws are, if you don't like the guy, that's fine, but you still have to go by what the laws and the rules are." And so, I, I would hope that the other board members are looking at it the same way, that even if I don't like you, don't like your corporation, or whatever, I still have to go by the way the rules are.
Well, I would agree with some of the comments made, 'cause I am a business owner, also, besides a farmer, and getting permits for some stuff can get pretty costly, if you have to go get all them permits beforehand, and then your CUP gets denied, you've just spent all that money for nothing, and I really don't see a reason why you need them ahead of time, when there's conditions on the CUP that you don't get to operate until all the permits have been obtained, so I guess, I'm not in favor of this, and I'm, but I'm just one person, and if, if we want to go back and look it over some more and try to come up with something that's better, I, I'm not opposed to that, but the way it's written right now, I'm not in favor of it.
And I, I think I could add to your point a little bit, um, I can half-understand the reasoning for this, but really, what are we gonna gain that we don't have now?
Nothing.
I think we have those protections already.
Right.
So we're not, I don't, I don't feel that we're really gonna gain anything by, uh, putting this language into the CUP ordinance.
Any other board comment?
Yeah, I'll make a comment on that.
Okay.
That was, uh, through the work session, that's kind of what they were, what we were spitballing, or what kinda getting the conversation started, but I feel like this board does a really nice job taking up public input and, um, conditioning everything, you know, uh, fairly correctly, and, um, like I said, with conditions that require most of these permits, you guys have them on there with Adam's guidance, we, we do a nice job, I feel like, and also, you guys are correct, like, it'd be terrible to deny someone a business opportunity because of financial implication due to just permitting, because they are expensive and, uh, and then, um, yeah, to do all that, and it still had to be, uh, be shut down due to, um, due to personal reasons would be, would be a detriment, so, yeah, I, I agree with all you guys' comments here and the ones in the crowd, so thank everybody for their input, 'cause it, it means a lot and it, it does go somewhere, so thank you.
So what do we wanna do here?
I would move we table this, at least till next month.
All right, we got a motion from Ken to table this.
I'll second it.
Second by Roger.
Can I ask a question? Is there specific things you'd like me to research, look into, reach out to certain people in order to help your decision for next month's meeting?
I would be interested in what some of those state agencies would have to say if we did pass this.
Sure.
How, how they could work with us on this, if it's at all possible.
Okay.
And in particular, the cannabis people.
Okay.
Because that's coming out.
Yep, okay.
As was mentioned, I'm the new guy, um, what is our responsibility on this? I mean, we, as a, as a commission here, are not really going to approve or disapprove it, we're gonna recommend to the Board of Commissioners what we think they should do, so it's ultimately up to them.
Correct.
Correct.
And this proposal has came from them, and it's up to us basically to, to basically just suggest whether we think it's a good idea or not.
Right.
Correct?
Right, yep, so the, the.
For everybody, everybody here to know what our role, role in this is.
Right.
By tabling it, then, we're basically saying, "Yeah, we're not too sure yet."
Right.
Right, and allows more time.
Or if we want to change maybe the language or something.
Yeah, so the concept and the idea of it came from the Board of Commissioners, the language that was drafted here was drafted by me, so that can be amended, if. So that can be amended. If, if something needs to be changed or whatever, I'm, I'm happy to do that. And then we can consider a recommendation to adopt that language, or a recommendation that there's no changes or whatever. But with the motion and second to table it here, I can, whatever research, things you want me to look into, I can bring that information back at then, the October meeting.
And it would be good for the public to know that if they have some questions or issues on it, that the Board of Commissioners would also be a good place to voice that.
Sure.
I got one more thing. Was this run by the land use attorney at all?
I will do that again. I had some conversations with him early in the process about looking into what other counties have this sort of language. But I can circle back with that and get a legal opinion on it, an official opinion on it. I did not obtain that.
All right, we got a motion and a second to recommend tabling this.
Roll call. Ken?
Yes.
Roger?
Yeah.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes. Motion carried. It's tabled till next month. If you think of anything between now and then that you'd like Adam to look into, give him a call.
Yep, happy to help. Okay.
All right, agenda item number two is North Star RNG.
Do you want me to review the whole staff report or just pick up from the end of it? We can go back to anything if we don't.
Yeah, I don't, we've went through it a couple of times already. I don't think we need to go through the whole thing again.
So just a few.
If you've changed, changed anything, or?
Yep, so just some minor tweaks and just some additional information here. So after that, because we tabled it from last meeting, we did bring it to the work session just to have the discussion at the county board. And there were a few questions that popped up, so one being that, is the request for the CUP an amendment to the existing CUP that's issued to Dairy Ridge? Or will this be a whole new CUP issued to the property, to the property? So the answer is that it's, it'll be processed as an amendment to the existing CUP due to be, there's no changes to the feedlot itself with this application. Amendments to an existing CUP limit the conditions that can be set to the specific request at hand. So what this board can recommend to the county Board of Commissioners strictly relates to the request of the methane digester. Now that you can't go back and look at any of the existing conditions or change anything of that existing CUP. Another question was about the pipeline agreement with the public utility. And is there one to address the liability of that pipeline? I'll look to Mark to answer that. And then the third was a question about what a green credit is, and then how it applies to this particular situation. Based on the conversation at the last planning commission meeting, I did make some minor changes to the recommended conditions. If you look up here, we had eight, I think there's nine now. The one I added was the, was Andy's recommendation of, which is now number five, the applicant shall host an annual onsite safety meeting with all those local public safety personnel to review the emergency response plan and changes to the operation, and that Todd County shall be invited as an attendee to verify completion. The other minor change was to the one, number four, with Mark's request is that that initial onsite safety meeting would be done before the startup of the operation, not before the start of construction, so that they can actually review what's physically on the ground at that time. So those are the only minor changes to the proposed conditions. Okay, some options for tonight. First, you can develop a recommendation for the Board of Commissioners to review during their September 17th Commissioners Meeting. The 30 days from the notice from MPCA would land on September 26th. So if a response from MPCA is received prior to that deadline, the board could consider your recommendation on this, on this application sooner. Also, the next Commissioners Meeting would be October 1st, after the one on the 17th, which would be after MPCA needs to submit their response for that EAW, but then it's also before the next planning commission meeting. So you can, this board is able to make a recommendation tonight because it's not that final decision. The other option is, you could table the item while we continue to wait on a response from MPCA on the need for the EAW. The need for the EAW may influence the decision at the county level, and would also push out the timeline in which the Board of Commissioners can issue a decision. County will have 60 days from when we receive the notice from MPCA, and then an additional planning commission meeting will be held prior to that 60-day deadline. So that's really the two options I see for this board tonight. That's what I have for you for updates.
All right.
And then, Mark, I got to bring them up.
Mark to talk about?
Yeah, and he also has some new slides I didn't bring up, so I'll bring those up.
All right.
So, Mark Hill, I'm co-CEO of Novia RNG, which is a parent company of North Star RNG, which is the project company wanting to do the renewable natural gas project.
You just tell me to scroll through.
Yeah, and so I think this is probably the, be the third time you've seen some iteration of this. I'm probably going to skip through, just for everybody's benefit unless you want to see the entire presentation. Just to some key slides, I think, as people were, issues that were brought up during the public comments previously. So slide six, I think, is important.
One more.
One more.
Yep.
So what I've heard frequently, and this is becoming more and more prevalent, and rightfully so, is a concern about water quality. Depending on where you're at, there are polluted wells, not in this area, not from this dairy, but it has happened. E. coli contamination, high nitrate levels, is something responsible farmers think about, and is something that homeowners with drinking wells in the country should be thinking about as well. A few key items that come, that I want to talk about on the digester. First, again, no additional water is being used for this digester. We've said such to the MPCA. If you even wanted to put a conditional use in there, that I don't get to use any water past a bathroom and a sink, I'm fine with that. I mean, water is my enemy when it comes to digesting manure. The other key things are, digesters are proven effective waste treatment tools. It's, they're at wastewater treatment plants typically at cities above 20,000 people, they have anaerobic digesters there. It's part of wastewater treatment. They help with the biological oxygen demand and reducing odors from there. Matter of fact, some of them are doing things similar to us of either generating electricity or generating renewable natural gas from the municipal wastewater treatment system. And this started back 100 years ago, doing this. So this is not new technology. I have a link here. You're welcome to go to the link. 95% lower pathogens in digested versus undigested manure. That's E. coli bacteria, which is the primary contaminant of drinking wells. And that's the, Penn State University did a study on that. Solids, what comes in, is typically about 10% total solids, meaning that's 90% liquid, remaining 5%, when it comes out, because we've digested a bunch of this, it's only about 5%. It makes the manure a lot more pumpable. And in terms of nitrogen, we don't remove nitrogen, but what happens is it gets converted into ammonium, not ammonia, but ammonium, which the same study by Penn State University shows that it's more rapidly converted to nitrate, which is the foremost really taken up by plants, and this reduces nitrogen runoff from sites. So this is a, not, we talked a lot about the greenhouse gas benefits of this in previous presentations. I, I think something that I wanted to spend a little more time on was the improvements to water quality as well here. So it, it's, you know, it's interesting, because I've done a lot of presentations. This will be, if this gets permitted, my, my 14th project to be permitted. Typically, we get support from both sides, conservatives, liberals, people in the city, people who live in the country, environmentalists. And as of recent, there's been more pushback to this. And I just want to say, like, I'm running an environmental company. We founded this as an environmental company. And this is something we're doing as allies of environmentalists. And we appreciate working with dairies such as Dairy Ridge that are looking forward, forward to thinking about this on how they're going to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. And Dairy Ridge is so forward-thinking that they actually have done studies with the University of Minnesota on measuring how much methane a cow belches, depending on what you feed it. And so there's a genuine interest here in doing right by the environment across the board. I think I hit on most of the other concerns that were brought up when I was here a couple of weeks ago. I would like to, and I'll get to some of the questions that you asked, but I, I would like to ask the committee to at least vote on a recommendation on this. It is not binding. While the state is determining whether an EAW is necessary, the only thing that cannot happen is the final permit cannot be issued, if I'm correct, Adam. And I think going forward, we would like to, you know, have, have the Board of Supervisors vote on this as well as soon as that's cleared up, just for some finality on this. So one of the questions was asked was, I think, can you repeat the question on the pipeline company?
Yeah, so is there a pipeline agreement with the public utility to address the liability of the pipeline?
Yeah. So there's the chicken and the egg, and we had kind of the previous agenda item had a little bit of the chicken and the egg in there, too, right? So we are working with CenterPoint right now. We were selected as part of an RFP to go forward. We're now working on a letter of intent with CenterPoint Energy for both the sale and the pipeline to be coming down. They're doing a technical study on that. I'd expect the letter of intent to be signed within a couple of months. I don't have a whole lot of control over that, because CenterPoint is a, a large company. And once that letter of intent is signed, then we start the process of signing the interconnect agreements coming in. What I will say is, anything, any pipes outside of the dairy property would be owned by CenterPoint, not us. We would probably run just a few hundred-yard connector to the interconnect that they'd be putting onto the site. That's all on the dairy property.
Any other question was about green credits and how they potentially apply in this situation?
Yeah, so unfortunately, our country doesn't have, like, one system of environmental credits. There's all sorts of different credits that are out there. California has theirs, the federal government has them, if you go into vehicle fuel. CenterPoint, and I don't want to speak on behalf of them, but my understanding of what's happening is, a few years ago, Minnesota passed National Gas Innovation Act, which required utilities serving customers start examining the carbon intensity of the natural gases going into people's houses. And so as part of that act, CenterPoint is, goes out and looks for gas that has a negative or a lower carbon intensity in order to meet those requirements. That negative carbon intensity can be measured in multiple ways. The typical way that is done is the Argon Greep Model. Argon Labs is one of the national laboratories that examines this. They have an incredibly complicated model that I've tried to understand, but I understand the basics of it. But it looks at greenhouse gas emissions out of lagoons, and how you're stopping it, but also how much Lufthansa you're using, how much normal natural gas you're using. Are you trucking, and how much diesel did you use? So it all goes into that. And then, so CenterPoint says, okay, what is the value of this to the rate base per the laws that, the national, the law that was passed, does the math and says, yes, we want this gas, no, we don't want this gas. So that, in a nutshell, CenterPoint's trying to meet requirements of the Minnesota Natural Gas Innovation Act.
All right, thank you. At this time, we will open it. Is there any correspondence?
Yes.
Okay.
I have two pieces here from the same person, though. From Amanda Hinson. "Today I spoke with MPCA and learned it will be a three-year investigation into violations at another digester in town that is emitting odors. A neighbor to the digester, which would produce methane for a pipeline, and is no longer in use, reported to me that there's terrible and profuse odor coming from the unused digester. What will the county do to ensure the problem like this is fixed and regulated quickly? Already, there have been severe health effects in neighbors and people like myself and my child from H2S. A dog reportedly died today from unknown causes near the digester. Please don't pass this if you don't have a plan to mitigate issues." And then this was her other one. It says, "I couldn't make it to the meeting today in person, but I listened in and want to note another concern that was emerging but not addressed. With the higher concentrations of nitrates in the land-ready fertilizer, the less fertilizer is needed on the land. The question is, are there enough farmers who will take the fertilizer? In meetings with the city of Long Prairie, it was said that a major problem with the digester at Central By is they can't find anywhere to put the fertilizer. They were pumping the digester and had to quit because there aren't enough places to take the muck. To find another place, they said it would take 30 days for MPCA to approve the permit. I think an addition should be added that they have this calculated on how many more acres of land they will need, and have the commitments and permits set up beforehand. On the point of, on the point someone tried to make about people being so opposed to issuing permits lately, I don't think he characterized the concern of the people correctly. The people aren't going against business and aren't lovers of regulation. It's that we aren't using the process set forth in law to ask questions, raise concerns, and make sure everyone's interests are considered. I personally don't see this business as categorized as an egg business, egg business, though I see it uses egg to prop itself up. Prop itself up, but then all of us are egg businesses. We all are interconnected in our industries in the area. The neighborhood has good reason to care about this project and want to prevent any type of issue like we experience now with Central By and Long Prairie Packing. Attached is a report on the latest construction of the packing digester that no longer works but emits a stink. This was finished in 2012. What makes the new digester better as far as technology? I'm not asking for a reply, but I truly don't want to see this town get further degraded. The project would be fine, could be fine in our lifetime, but Central By was fine when my dad worked there and was not yet born. Or this packing digester was fine in 2014. Thank you, Amanda Hinson." That was it.
All right. At this time, we will open it up for public comment. Once again, raise your hand. You'll be called on. Come to the podium, sign in, state your name, and you will have three minutes for your comment. Any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Go ahead.
Jeff Baumann, Nez Consulting. Can address some of the land application issues. We've looked at that. You know, some of this, we're not going to know until we get there, as far as the ammonium nitrate, total nitrate, total, the TKN. But we've looked at it, and, and there is, even with the gallons that we're looking at, we've still got acres available right, right there. And there are other neighbors that have said that they will sign land application agreements to take manure from the site if necessary. I work with another digester. It's, they bring in food waste and sweet corn silage, and they digest. It's over in the sewer, and it's the same thing we do there. I mean, we're testing every month of product that's coming, that's coming, that's going, you know, coming out of the digester. And we plan our application rates accordingly. The 30 days mentioned, that is a state rule on industrial byproducts, that you have to have a 30-day notice to the, to the county and the township that you're going to apply in, in their vicinities. Talk about two, we went through, you know, through the manure management plan. It's required that we do nitrate testing of the irrigation water. We, we did get the results back. It took a little bit longer this year because we didn't have to run irrigators. But the state has a baseline of 24 parts per million. That's what they use as, as their baseline, is what they base, you go off of. And all of the Dairy Ridge tests came under that. Several of them were a point, a 0.1. Several of them were a point, a 0.1 nitrates. So just wanted to make that note.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? If none, we'll close the public comment period and open it up for board discussion.
I got one question that I just thought of tonight. Many times we went over this. Now, with Dairy Ridge's manure, that is farm manure. Now, when you run it through the digester, are now we industrial waste?
No.
And run under different rules?
No, because I'm not adding anything to the digester. So if I was starting to add things like ferric chloride or some, and so I don't know what the rules are in Minnesota, but I know in some states, like I do business in Vermont, that if we start adding food waste to it, then it would kick into a different category. But because we're not adding anything to it, it just stays as manure in the eyes of the MPCA.
I know like with the packing house or Central By, they run under a different set of rules than what a big dairy like Dairy Ridge would run under.
That's correct, and they're putting in different things than I would put in.
Can I expand upon that, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I think that's the big distinction between some of the existing ones and what they're proposing here is the industrial byproducts that they're digesting. And I think some of the issues they run into with land applying that is there may be diseased animals and things that were a part of that. I don't think people are real eager to take that stuff on. So in this case, they're digesting manure. Condition number six states that they're limited to manure so that we don't get into those other categories. And if they wanted to, this condition states they have to come back and go through this process again so we can consider those other products that would be digested. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Could you run through those two options one more time?
Sure. Yep, so one, option one being you can finish your process here today. If you're comfortable with making a recommendation one way or another, you can do that tonight. What we would then do is take that to the Board of Commissioners. If we don't have a response from MPCA, we can review it at a work session or whatever. If we get a response from MPCA, we can put it up for consideration. That option lines up because we should get a response back from MPCA prior to the next planning commission meeting.
And a response about what?
The need for the EAW. Yep, and if they, if MPCA comes back and says, yes, we're going to have this EAW, well, that pushes the timeline out anyway. If they come back and say, nope, we're not going to require the EAW, well, then we have 60 days to make that decision, and we can get it in front of the county board right away so that you have the time to make that decision. You can also sit on it, table it tonight, because we're in this position where really 1599, really, the time clock hasn't started yet on it. So that's the other option.
Okay.
My opinion, I think we've kicked it down the road about far enough. I think we're going to run out of road here pretty quick. I think either we got to do something one way or the other.
Well, I got a question. If, if, if it would come back that MPCA is requiring EAW, would it come back here or it would just basically be sat on until you got an answer from MPCA and then go to the Commissioners?
Right, that, that 60-day time clock wouldn't even start for us to consider really until MPCA is satisfied with whatever the EAW said, right? So we're pushing this down the road even further. So there's, there's really not a lot of risk in making a recommendation tonight. And it gives, yeah, we can bring that forward to the Commissioners then.
But can we approve it?
Yeah, yes.
The stipulations that they would have to do an EAW if MPCA states that?
Well, yeah.
They're going to have to do it no matter what because that's not up to us. That's up to MPCA.
Right, but we could approve it.
I think that's automatic.
That's automatic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's assumed, yeah.
If we approve this, basically what we're saying is it meets our recommendations and our requirements. The chips fall where they do with the rest of the regulations and
Right, yep.
And if they, and if they get approval, then our decision stands. And if they don't get approval, our decision still stands until they do get approval.
On the EAW side of things, right, yeah. We, it would sit there until we can get in a position where we can actually make a decision at the county board level.
What we'd be saying is it's met everything that we can think of on our side.
Yep. With the, well, as proposed now, nine conditions. I can review those again if you'd like me to also.
Well, I would say that in the spirit of Roger's comment here, not wanting to kick the can anymore.
Yeah. Running out of road.
I would move that we recommend that Commissioners to approve this.
With the nine conditions?
With the nine conditions we have down.
I will second that because we have up here that they have to abide by all federal, state, and local standards anyway, so.
All right, we got a motion by Ken and a second by Roger to recommend granting the CUP with the nine conditions.
Roll call Ken.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes, motion carried. It will go to the Commissioners whenever they get a response from MPCA.
We'll, we'll probably bring it to the Commissioners on September 17th. Either way, it's just whether it be work session or on the actual agenda to make a decision. That's kind of up in the air yet.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, next agenda item. Arnold and Chris Grunis.
Okay, same story. Want me to just skip ahead to the new stuff here?
Uh, yeah, I think so. We went over, we've been over this a couple of times.
Yep, so just following up from last meeting, there's really, really two questions that we left to be answered here. One being, how often does MPCA review the manure management plans, manure application records of these NPDS-permitted sites? Which I have a response from Courtney from MPCA here. And the second piece being, what options exist for the dust control along County 99? My last thing is I think we just need to finish our conversation about lighting on the site, which I'm sure you have some comments on that. But first, how often does MPCA review the manure management plans and
Hang on a second, Adam.
You want that shade pulled?
It is pulled.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to gain much by putting it down more. We just blast through there. Okay, manure manag, this is a response from Courtney Frank with the MPCA. Manure management plans are reviewed at issuance and reissue issuance and during any modifications of the permit. Annual reports get sent in every year from the NPDS and SDS-permitted sites. In those annual reports, they have to send in their land application records and the amount of manure that was produced and how much was transferred. The transfer of manure documents come in in those annual reports as well. And then she said, let me know if you have any other questions. So they review, when they issue the permit, any reissuance is when there's modifications. But ultimately, the feedlot operator supplies records annually to them to review what they actually land applied. The second part is options for dust control in County 99. This is from Lauren Felbaum, Public Works Engineer. Todd County Public Works Department completed a traffic count last week on County Road 99. The data is attached here if anybody wants to see it. But the breakdown and the summary of the data we gathered during the count, as you can see on the sheet, that we have an average, we average the individual counts at the north and south ends of the road over a standard 48-hour period to get the ADT value. I don't know what that actually stands for, but it's 123 vehicles per day is what they calculated. When we add this data point into the attached 2025 Dust Control Segment Analysis, you can see the ADT went up from a value of 70 vehicles per day from the previously supplied data from indot. You can also see that County Road 99 exceeds the 90 vehicles per day threshold for when Public Works recommends applying dust control on annual basis as part of our standard dust control program. Therefore, with all that being said, Todd County Public Works Department will be adding County Road 99 to our 2025 Dust Control Project Program. And if you want to see any of the data, I can pass it around for people to see here too.
All right. At this time, we will open it up for public comment. Anyone in attendance have any questions, comments about this application? Any public comment?
The only thing I want to mention before public comment closes is I'd like to amend the condition with the lights. We looked into it in the last month, and they don't make a shade for the lights that we have hung up. And so we'd have to replace all the lights that we have. But I was wondering if we could just amend it to that we have to have them tipped down so it's not really glaring over the property edge. Because it's a predator thing is, is one of the bigger reasons that we want to keep the lights up. I have some pictures on my phone I can give to Adam. We have wolves on camera out there, and we've had them push the heifers in the yard. And instead of needing to put different lights up in order to put the shades on, if we could just have it so that, and we have to have them tipped down farther, would be what I would ask.
All right, that was
Condition number six, which I didn't edit at this point. It's still what we had it as at last meeting.
Well, Mr. Grunis, have you added lights since you've been there or is it all the lights that were there?
We added some when we bought, when we did the last, when we did some changes. We put different waters in with heaters in them, and then we had power in the yard, so we put light poles up and we put lights up. And, and I want to say this week, the lots were finally dry enough to take our lift out there and tip them down some. So it's, it should be a little bit better, and we can, you know, however, we can adjust that. But I know we looked at it. I got, went and got the brand off of the lights and talked with our electrician, and we did some looking, and they don't make a shade like we had talked about last month for them.
All right, we will discuss that when we get through the public comment. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? If there's no public comment, we'll close the public comment period and open it up for board discussion. So condition number six. Do we want to take off the hooded and put adjusted or?
I would say we should take the hood off there. I didn't realize they weren't available. I thought they were for most lights, but that's okay. As long as some kind of effort is made to keep the light from
Yeah, yeah.
You know, including your neighbors, so to speak, so.
Could we say hooded or adjusted to not?
Well, just say adjusted. That could be hoods or not, but
Either way.
Whatever it takes, I think.
Give them flexibility to make it happen, either.
Yep.
All right.
I will state with this dust control on 99, that sounds like a good idea. But the problems I have was the complaints we've had on dust control. That farm has been there for a long time before Mr. Grunis got. Most of the property on, from that farm have to go up that road. He's been going up that road for years. And those people that are out there, some of them was there. Well, none of them, I don't think, had been there before Billy was. He was going up and down that road a long time before they were. When they went out there and bought that property, them roads were gravel roads. And if they looked in their mirror when they went down, there was dust.
Well, it sounds like the county's going to put down dust control, so the dust issue is. Any other questions, comments from the board? Do you have anything else you want to?
I don't think so. I just, just to clarify Courtney's, you know, legal definitions. We, it's reissued every five years. Because I know the last month, they were asking how often it gets checked. We have to have enough land in our manure management plan all the time, and it's reissued and rechecked. They can look at it anytime. They did a site visit with us this week. Then every single year, we have to turn, like Adam said, we turn in what fields got manure, what rate of manure. We have to take a manure sample for every field, whether it's in our plan or we sell the manure to somebody else. All of that information is recorded and turned in every single year. And then we have to have a sufficient amount of land in our plan at all times, and it's revised every five years.
All right. Any other? Anything else anybody's got any questions about? And we changed number six?
Yep. All lighting on the site shall be adjusted as to prevent casting of light beyond the feedlot site.
All right.
I will make a motion to approve this with the proposed condition.
We got a motion by Roger to recommend approval to the Commissioners with the seven conditions.
I second it.
Second by Andy.
Roll call Ken.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes, motion carried. It'll go to the Commissioners on the 17th. You can be there if you like, but you don't have to be.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Next agenda item number four is Taylor, Taylor's Woods Third Edition Preliminary Platte.
Ready?
Coming up to there. You can have a seat at the table there.
Yep.
And we will have the staff report.
Sure, this is the Taylor Woods Third Edition Preliminary Platte on parcel 110080100. The site address for the current site is 10763 Angler Trails located in Shoreland Recreational Development Zoning on Big Birch Lake. The request is for creation of a three-lot platte in recreational development zoning. You can see the site here on kind of the north side of Big Birch Lake. Just zoomed into the existing property here on the point. Here's the preliminary platte, which I can enlarge the size of that if you need me to. The zoning information, the blue is all identifying as shoreline, and this kind of purple pink color is identifying that Big Birch Lake is a recreational development lake. So topography and wetlands overlaid together of the site. The soil is consisting of sandy loam. And a few site images here, this is the existing home, which is going to be located on Lot 1. The flip around looking southwest towards Angler Trail. This is the existing driveway on what will be Lot 1. Another structure existing on Lot 1. Secondary septic location identified on Lot 1. And then here, I'm out on Angler Trail looking east from that access. Flipped around looking west. And down the road a little further here, looking east down Angler Trail. And looking west again. It's very difficult to take any other pictures of the site because it's very heavily treed right now. Dimensional features, so the repairing lot size requirement for an RD lake is 40,000 square feet. This is meeting that. Buildable area of 80,000 square feet, it's meeting that. The depth of 200 and, or sorry, width of 200, depth of 150 is meeting both of those, and road frontage of 150, meaning that. And sewerable sites needs to be two per lot. We have that data in the folder here. sites needs to be two per lot. We have that data in the folder here. There's no bluff impact zones or severe steep slopes. The soils consist of sandy loams. There's small wetland areas on the sites. This has been reviewed by our wetland staff, and I have a comment here. There's no streams or flood plains of concern, and the vegetation is, it's very heavily wooded right now. With that, recommendation would be a motion to recommend approval to the county board commissioners with the following conditions: that new accesses from the township road shall be approved by the local township prior to installation, and that new access locations shall be approved by Todd County Wetland Staff to verify there are no wetland impacts, and third, that the applicant abide by all other applicable federal, state, and local standards.
Thank you. Any correspondence?
We have a few pieces here. I'll start with this one. This is from Kason Christensen, who is our whacka expert in the office of wetland staff. Good morning. I'm reviewing the Taylor Woods Third Edition on parcel 11-0080100. I would recommend not putting any accesses west of the telephone pole on Lot 2. A basin is present between Angler Trail and the telephone pole that has evidence of temporary water ponding. So that was why the creation of condition number two exists. Second here, it says, "Any development within these plats that disturbs more than 200 square feet will likely require a Sauk River watershed district erosion control permit due to the proximity to Big Birch Lake. If the project creates one or more acres of impervious surface, a stormwater permit would be required." The stormwater permit will require a best manner of practice to treat the newly created impervious surface. Sauk River watershed district recommends notifying the road authority that if the roadway impervious surface is one acre greater, a BMT may be required. Thanks. And that's from Kate Caswell. She's with Houston Engineering, but represents the Sauk River watershed district. And lastly, here is from the site sirs. Says, "Good morning. Our question below regarding the upcoming rezoning meeting for Dennis, Ron, and Kurt Taylor, Section 30 Eagle, Great Eagle Township on Big Birch Lake. Taylor Woods, Taylor's Woods have given us privacy over the years, so how much of the woods do Taylors intend on clearing to build their houses, garage, or sheds? Are they intending to change the grade of the land?" These are questions. Are they intending to change the grade of the land? What are they intending to use for the various sheds? Will those sheds be used to generate income? And if yes to those, what are the business hours? Is there a security system and lighting systems being installed, and was the impact on local traffic flow? The new owners will probably be installing docks, lifts, et cetera, on the shoreline, which is Hunter's Bay. The bay is a habitat to various animals and plants, and the current docks, boats, and lifts are placed amid reeds and lily pads. Who manages this to ensure the preservation integrity of Hunter's Bay is kept intact?" Those are the comments, our written correspondence.
Thank you. At this time, we will open it up for public comment. Anyone in attendance have any questions, comments on this application? Any public comment? Any public comment? If there's no public comment, we will close the public comment period and open it up for board discussion. Who was on the site visit?
Andy.
That'd be me.
Andy, you got anything to?
I just had some notes. Everything according to the list that we go through looked fairly good. A couple of things maybe to mention. Impact on existing infrastructure would look to be minimal because, and it's a dirt road, a fairly, fairly good dirt road. There's a possible issue, as was mentioned with the driveways, that could go through wetlands, which of course they would have to approve. Impacts on traffic. It's a 30 mile per hour zone. It looks like any kind of drives that could be added would be kind of on the inside of a curve, so I don't know if that would affect any kind of potential hazards there. Of course, we don't know for sure if there's going to be public nuisance considerations because we don't know exactly if it's going to be residential, or if it's going to be another use, which I suppose would require another CUP if it does.
Right.
And stormwater management there again would probably be a part of the wetland control or wetland approval because of the variable topography with possible wetlands and so forth. And it is very, very, right now, heavily wooded and flush, though. It's kind of hard to see exactly the lay of the land, but...
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the board?
And he said it's heavily wooded. Well, there's power line running through there, so they got clearings there. But I guess one thing I, we've noticed this before on some of these larger lots where people come along and try to subdivide them. Now, can we put anything in a covenant or something that it cannot be subdivided? Take a bigger lot and make it into two or three lots?
Our legal counsel has told us that those are bad conditions to make because you never know what the future holds, so to limit that. But you can certainly create conditions that require the creation of protective covenants. But for the county to say that that can never be split further, our, the legal advice has been that those are not good conditions.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
I can answer to some of these questions that were in this particular piece of correspondence here, too.
Okay, go ahead.
Ultimately, so what we're looking at here tonight is just, is the proposal meeting the depth with size requirements?
Right.
And any of the future land uses of the individual properties are reviewed at that time of application. So we don't know what their plans are for this, if it's going to be for homes or sheds or whatever. If there is businesses, it's likely that there's conditional use permits required, so they'll come back to this board to get those permits. And things that are required are allowed by ordinance already, we would issue permits on. So it's tough to answer to all these things without knowing what their future land uses are, nor is the review that this board's doing tonight addressing those things.
Right. This is just for the plat.
Right.
Has nothing to do with what's going to happen with it.
This question would just... Right. Anything going on.
Right.
Yeah. There's no additional land uses being approved by this board tonight related to it.
I, I see no issues with the plat, I guess. I mean...
No, I don't, I don't either. Oops. I would move that we recommend approval for this with the conditions that we have up there.
With the three conditions.
Yes.
All right, we got a motion by Ken. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Andy. To recommend approval to the commissioners with the three conditions.
Ken?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jim.
Yes. Motion carried. Goes to the commissioners on September 17th. You can be present if you like, but you don't have to be.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to take a short recess?
Yeah, we'll take a little break here.
Turn the intermission on.
Now, now you don't want to have the tape. You see the other way.
I think we need to invest in some new shades. Buckets. I mean, those things do no good at all.
Like black plastic.
Quite a crowd here for that particular subject, apparently. There's that many people, nobody said anything.
Yeah.
You get in the winter.
I got a little wood stove in there.
Oh, really?
There's way more fish.
Hang out there. Uh, yeah. Hang out there and drink coffee and talk.
Dude, I can see that is probably a copy.
Myself.
But, summer time.
All right, our next agenda item is.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's one of the.
Robert Harguth. Harguth?
Okay.
For a CUP for farm produce and commercial sales.
Yep, so this is Robert Harguth. Okay, we'll get it one of these times. On parcel ten zero zero two eight eight zero zero. Site address one five three six seven one hundred fifteenth Avenue located in Shoreland Natural Environment Zoning of an unnamed lake. The request is for a CUP for a farm produce and commercial sales and natural environment Shoreland zoning. You can see the site here near the county line south of Osakis. Just zoomed into the property here. And here's a site sketch that was provided in the application. And this is just identifying that it is in Shoreland zoning and you can kind of see the general outline of the unnamed lake. Topography and wetlands. Soils. And then a few site images here, here, I'm out on the township road one hundred fifteenth Avenue looking south from the access. Flipped around, looking north.
It'll, it'll close.
Okay, it's automatic. Uh, and looking north. Uh, and then looking west into the property here. Um, looking, I'm out near the road here again, I'm looking southwest into the site, trying to get you a general layout here. This is one of the orchards that they have off to the left-hand side of this, of the picture. And flipped over looking kind of more northwest direction. And then, uh, in the site, looking back east towards one hundred fifteenth Avenue. This is the existing structure on the site. And this is the proposed area for that additional structure that was in that site sketch. And they have some orchard back here and kind of the goofy shaped property would back over here too as some more stuff. All right, application consideration is the use in conformance with the purposes of the comprehensive plan. Economic Development Guiding Principle number four states to promote, protect, and support existing business and agriculture. Land use guiding principle number one states promote and guide the orderly development and growth in Todd County in a fair and common sense manner. Two, the establishment of the condition use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property. There are no negative impacts. No negative impacts are expected to affect the development improvement of surrounding properties. The establishment of this proposed condition use will not limit neighboring properties. Three, the applicant in the opinion of the planning commission has demonstrated a need for the proposed use and is reasonably related to the overall needs of the county and to the existing land use. This property has various orchards established, has the existing land use, establishment of the proposed commercial use will allow for further expansion to this existing land use. Four, the use will not create an excessive burden on infrastructure, including parks, schools, streets, and other public facilities or u- and utilities would serve or are proposed to serve the area. There are no public utilities or facilities in the vicinity of concern. Site is located on a township gravel that is approximately a half mile off of paved county highway. Five, the use will not create a pollution hazard or other detrimental environmental effects both during and after construction. Effects to be considered shall include but not limited to soil erosion and sedimentation, pollution or other degradation of surface water and groundwater supplies. Impact on water supply and adequacy of sewage treatment. Environmental effects as a result of the proposed use are of minimal concern. Water use is not anticipated to reach any permitting standards. Six, adequate measures have been or will be taken to sufficiently minimize traffic congestion and provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. Adequate outside parking is available for business traffic along with adequate loading space. Seven, adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, glare, appearance, and vibration so that none of these will constitute a public nuisance. Odors, fumes, noise, glare, appearance, and vibration are of middle, minimal concern for the proposed use. Dust from traffic on the township gravel may be of concern during busier portions of the year. Eight, the intensity of the proposed use is not inconsistent with the purposes of the ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. Commercial nursery sales, outdoor recreation businesses, and commercial services are all conditional uses in Shoreland zoning. Recommendation would be a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners with the following conditions. One, off-street parking shall be provided for all, uh, business traffic. Two, all business signage shall be located outside of the road right of way. And three, that the applicant abide by all other applicable federal, state, and local standards.
Thank you. Any correspondence?
Uh, we had none on this one.
All right. Would you like to tell us a little bit about what your?
Yeah, so I call, I call it my exit strategy. Currently work in the cities, so we travel back and forth every weekend. I grew up in Osakis. We decided to, we bought this, uh, piece of land, it was just a pay field. So for my retirement, to keep me busy, we started the orchard back in two thousand fifteen, we started planting trees. We have about, uh, somewhere around sixteen, seventeen hundred apple trees. Five hundred, five acres of asparagus to sell in the spring. So we sell asparagus, apples, season now, we have honey that we do right on the orchard. And, uh, we do make some other stuff too that, that sell for local, local folk, so. The idea is just to keep me busy during retirement, just make enough money just to pay for the bills and keep me happy.
Well, I think you'll have plenty to do.
I got way more than I can keep to do.
All right. That's. At this time, we will open it up for public comment. Anyone in attendance have any questions, comments on this application? Any public comment? Any public comment? If none, we'll close the public comment and open it up for board discussion. Andy, you were on this one also?
Yes. So, uh, my notes on this, it looked pretty straightforward. Um, one thing to note, the impact on surrounding properties, it sounds like the, the CUP is actually for like an additional building?
Yep, yep, for storage, I have to equip this sitting outside, I need the inside, I need like, and I need a bigger, cooler for the apples. I have a little cooler inside, it's not near enough, so I gotta put a custom cooler inside the door.
So that, the, the location that was cited where that additional building would go. Um, when you look at the, at the, when you're there, when you look at it from the road, the impact on surrounding properties, it's, I don't even know if you'll be able to see it. It looks like it'd be pretty well hidden by a fairly large barn-like structure that's already there. So that doesn't seem to be an issue at all as far as impact on any surrounding properties. The only other thing that I had was that, that there is a wetland nearby, um, which, um, probably isn't a problem. And that I did notice that there's already a rain gutter system on that large barn-like structure that's already there.
Yep.
Looks like that it goes into the ground, which I'm guessing probably goes into.
And then back to the barn, then back to the, back to the barn, so it can go, go into the wetlands.
It daylights back, okay, so it does go.
It daylights back, yes, yeah, it goes under the ground at daylight, so, yep.
So that's the only other thing that I really noted, everything else looked pretty straightforward.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments from the board?
Uh, was the town board, did they have anything to say, approve or disapprove, or?
Uh, you went to the township board.
Yes, I did, yep.
I don't know what they told you, but.
They had no issues with that.
Yeah, and, and we, all these CUPs now have required the applicant to go to the township before they come to us, so if they had any comments, we should have received them, we didn't receive anything.
Yeah.
Lots of apples to pick, huh?
That's what I was doing all day today. Now you know where I'm at, if you need some apples, it's very good.
Any other questions, comments? If none, somebody want to make a recommendation?
I make a motion to approve.
All right.
What the conditions?
Lloyd made a ma- motion to recommend approval with the three conditions.
I'll second that.
Second by Ken.
Roll call. Ken?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jim.
Yes. Motion carried, goes to the commissioners on the seventeenth, you can be present if you like, but you don't have to be. Thank you, good luck.
Next time you go, bring some apples to us.
Thank you.
All right, next agenda item is Henry Slaba. This is a CUP for custom machining and repair. We will have the staff report.
I'm Yost. I'm actually the one that's, um, I'm authorized to speak for it.
Oh, what was your name?
Yost.
Okay. Yost, got it. All right, so our applicant was Henry, Yost is here tonight. Uh, this is on parcel twenty-one zero zero three one four zero zero, currently no site address for it, it's located AF one zoning. This is CUP for custom machining, repair, and just a job shop in AF one zoning. Located in Round Prairie Township, you can see the location of the site there. Zoomed into the existing property, um, this box you see within the property was a cemetery that we did a couple years ago. And then this upper northeast corner is where the shop is going here. So you can see the site plan here. Um, it's going right near the intersection of this dead-end road to the east and then just off of one hundred seventieth street. This is identifying it's an AF one zoning. Topography and wetlands of the property. Soil is consisting mostly of sandy loams. And some site images, here I'm at that intersection, this is two hundred, looking south down two hundred and thirty-fifth Avenue, which is the dead-end road. So I'm standing on a hundred and, what is it, one hundred and seventieth street. Um, this is just the current structure that's being built on site, this is not where the business is proposed to be located. Um, it's tough to see, but in this picture, there are a handful of pink flags, you can barely see in that alfalfa. Um, that's where they're going to be building the structure where the CUP is being applied to. Just another view of that area, you can kind of see those pink flags in there. And here, I'm looking east down one hundred seventieth from the access. And then looking west here. Okay, um, one is use in conformance with the purposes of the comprehensive plan. Economic Development Guiding Principle number four. Uh, promote, protect, and support existing business and agriculture, land use guiding principle number one, promote and guide the orderly development and growth in Todd County in a fair and common sense manner. Two, the establishment of the condition use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property. If you know impacts to the surrounding properties, the surrounding properties are mostly ag land with the exception of the neighboring property to the west, which is under the same ownership of this property. Three, the applicant in the opinion of the planning commission has demonstrated a need for the proposed use and is reasonably related to the overall needs of the county to the existing land use. Uh, the proposal should not have a major impact on roads, infrastructure, or neighboring properties and require and provides unique business to produce goods and services within the county. Four, the use will not create an excessive burden on infrastructure, including parks, schools, streets, or other public facilities and utilities would serve or are proposed to serve the area. There will be minimal impacts to public facilities and utilities in the area, the main area concern would be for the public roadway. This is Township Gravel Road with approximately half mile of traveled distance from a paved county highway. Uh, the use will not create a pollution hazard or other detrimental environmental effects both during and after construction. Effects to be considered shall include and not limited to soil erosion and sedimentation, pollution, or other degradation of surface water and groundwater supplies. Impact on water supply and adequacy of sewage treatment. The site is flat with no surface waters in the immediate area, environmental concerns during construction are minimal. And also operation of the business should not create any en- environmental hazard. Six, adequate measures have been or will be taken to sufficiently minimize traffic congestion and provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. There's not an anticipated large increase in traffic to this business, there is off-street parking available and adequate loading space avail- is available also. Seven, adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, glare, appearance, and vibration so that none of these will constitute a public nuisance. The operation of the business, including the engine room being closed, uh, inside of the building, storage of materials will be conducted in an orderly manner to not create a public nuisance. Eight, the intensity of the proposed use is not inconsistent with the purposes of this ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. This proposal, uh, falls under the other uses of the same general character category of requiring a, requiring conditional use permitting. With a CUP, this operation meets the requirements of the ordinance in AF one zoning. Recommendation would be to recommend approval with four conditions, that off-street parking shall be provided for all business traffic. If you're loading or unloading materials within the road right of way. Three, all business signage shall be placed outside of the road right of way. And four, that the applicant abide by all other applicable federal, state, and local standards.
Thank you.
That's what I have, Mr. Chair.
Any correspondence?
We had none.
All right, at this time, we will open it up for public comment. Anyone in attendance have any questions, comments on this application? Any public comment? Any public comment? If none, we'll close the public comment period and open it up for board discussion.
I made the site visit for this, uh, CUP also, um, very straightforward. Looks like very minimal, um, impact on anything. Um, the only thing that, uh, the condition about the public nuisance considerations. I guess it does depend a little bit on eventual use, it does look like the engine room is, um, designed to look towards the roadway. Which would then, um, affect the property on the other side, which as was noted, is also owned by the applicant, I believe, so. As long as that stays in place, they shouldn't, they shouldn't care. Um, and, uh, based on, it's kind of hard to see from the pictures, but based on, um, uh, again, where they plan on putting it. It looks like it's going to basically be built on kind of a high spot on the property, which it's fairly flat, so. There shouldn't be any kind of considerations for stormwater and management type of things, so. Always look good.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments from the board?
Well, he's in my township and they came to our meeting last month. And, uh, relocated and where they want to put in the road going out on whatever street it is there, the dead-end road. And I just stopped in there last week one day and they, we had, it shows on the map here for culvert, I don't believe you even need a culvert there. I told them that when I stopped in there. I stopped and watched them work, so.
All right. So it sounds like it, the only thing here that could even be a concern would be the engine, how big is this engine we're talking about?
Ten by ten.
How much?
Ten feet by ten foot.
The engine?
The engine room.
The engine room, how big is the engine?
Um, it's like a forty-five horse.
So.
Three cylinder, a four cylinder engine.
Okay.
Will be inside.
And by having the engine room, like Andy said, on the north side, the closest neighbor other than his brother. It's on the other side.
Yeah.
And they got trees in between and.
And the exhaust will go straight to the roof, probably?
Um, either out the side and then up, or?
But up anyway?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will make the motion to approve it, uh, it's my, my neighbor, my township, uh, as is, I think it looks like a very good idea.
All right, we got a motion by Roger to recommend approval with the four conditions.
I'll second that.
Second by Ken.
Roll call, Ken?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jim.
Yes. Motion carried, goes to the commissioners on the seventeenth, you can be present if you like, but you don't have to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next agenda item is Kurt Wisher. It's a request for a CUP for an in-home barber shop. And we will have the staff report.
How do you say your last name again? Wisher? Okay, so the applicant is Kurt Wisher. Uh, this on parcel twenty-two zero 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 nine three zero zero. Site address is eight oh three Long Prairie Road Southwest, located in our ten zoning. And the request is for an in-home barber shop in our ten zoning. Decided, location here just off the outskirts of the city of Staples in Staples Township. This is the existing, the full property here, uh, the building site here is in the northeast corner of the property off of Long Prairie Road. The site address, or sorry, the site sketch here, they have parking proposed to the south side of it, and then there's an existing portion of the structure that they'll be operating in. This is in our ten zoning, that brown color identifies our ten. Topography and wetlands of the area. Um, some soils information here, loamy sands this time. A few site images, I'm looking north down Long Prairie Road here towards the city of Staples. Looking west into the property from Long Prairie Road. And then looking east here, I'm in where the parking area is, looking back east towards Long Prairie Road. This is that existing structure and then the parking area out front. And then, I have these out of order, but looking south down Long Prairie Road here. Okay, one is the use in conformance with the purposes of the comprehensive plan. Economic Development Guiding Principle number one states to look for local options first, but do not become an isolationist. Land use guiding principle number three states to promote the location of more intense development in or near cities where urban services can be easily provided and extended. Two, the establishment of the condition use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property. This is an existing structure with a parking area and access from a paved county road, no additional infrastructure is needed and will have no negative impacts on surrounding properties. Three, the applicant in the opinion of the planning commission has demonstrated a need for the proposed use and is reasonably related to the overall needs of the county and to the existing land use. Proposed use is located along a paved county road, although the area is zoned as residential ten, it can be expected that a business would be established in higher traffic areas in close proximity to a city. Four, the use will not create an excessive burden on infrastructure, including parks, schools, streets, or other public facilities or utilities would serve or are proposed to serve the area. The entire infrastructure needed for this use already exists, it is not anticipated that this proposed use will create additional burden on the surrounding facilities. Five, the use will not create a pollution hazard or other detrimental environmental effects both during and after construction. Effects to be considered shall include but not limited to soil erosion and sedimentation, pollution, or other degradation of surface waters and groundwater supplies. Impact on water supply and adequacy of sewage treatment. The use will not create, uh, any additional environmental hazard, the set system for the site was inspected during the application. Six, adequate measures have been or will be taken to sufficiently minimize traffic congestion and provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. All parking will be off-street, as parking areas already exist, traffic congestion shouldn't be an issue either. Seven, that adequate measures, uh, have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, glare, appearance, and vibration so that none of these will constitute a public nuisance. The proposed use will not create a negative, uh, change to the overall appearance of the area and public nuisance issues will be minimal. Eight, intensity of the proposed use is not inconsistent with the purposes of this ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the ordinance intends to locate the proposed use. The structure use, location, and other considerations are not inconsistent with the purposes of the ordinance. Commercial services are allowed as conditional use in our, in residential ten zoning. Recommendation is to recommend approval with three conditions, one, off-street parking shall be provided for all business traffic. Two, that business signage shall be placed outside the road right of way. And three, the applicant to abide by all other applicable federal, state, and local standards. That's what I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, any correspondence?
Uh, we had none.
At this time, we will open it up for public comment. Anyone in attendance have any comments on this application? Any public comment? Any public comment? If none, we'll close the public comment period and open it up for board discussion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I also, uh, did the site visit on this, um, on this CUP. And, um, as was mentioned in the staff report, I, there was no, no, uh, impacts or very minimal impacts. Pollution hazards or public nuisance considerations probably are handled by any kind of barber shop regulations that they would have to comply to, so. I see no. I think I could see no issue, it's, it's located quite a ways off of, a fair amount off of that tar road, so. Even if there was something, it's kind of off the beaten path, so.
Any other comments? Pretty.
Pretty good.
Straightforward.
I would move, we recommend to approve with the conditions that are on there.
All right, we got a motion by Ken to recommend approval with the three conditions, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Andy.
Voice for Ken?
Yes.
Roger?
Yep.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Andy?
Yep.
Jim.
Yes, motion carried, goes to commissioners on the seventeenth, you can be present if you like, but you don't have to be.
Did they just call me then, or?
Yeah, I can follow up to you. You can come to a meeting if you want, but I present it on your behalf to the commissioners and then whatever the result is, um, I can let you know that.
Okay, then, I need a notary for my board.
Yeah, if you stop into our office, we have one handy.
That, anytime, or do you, when do you want to do that?
After the commissioners approve it.
Right, after the commissioner, yeah, yep.
Perfect. Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yep, good luck.
All right, our last agenda item is Alex Hoff, Hoffman?
Yep.
It's for a CUP. For a. Additional shop space.
Yeah, it's a auto repair.
All right.
But, uh, so our applicant's Alex Hoffman, two parcels involved here, fourteen zero zero three one five zero one and fourteen zero zero three zero five zero two. Site address is one zero seven two one, county ninety-five, located in Shoreland Natural Environment Zoning of Ferry Lake. Request is for a CUP to expand the existing, uh, nineteen ninety-two CUP by two thousand six hundred and fifty square feet for an additional shop space in, um, Natural Environment Shoreland zoning. Here's the site here on, uh, just south of Ferry Lake in Kandota Township. Zoomed into the site, uh, the, it's two parcels because this is the, um, section line there, so we, they're identif- they have to be two separate parcel numbers. This is the site sketch from the application, so the, the white roofed area here is the existing business and then the outlined area in black is what he's looking to add for additional space. Um, this is just a survey of the property that was provided in the application. Um, this is the zoning districts, the blue is Shoreland, and this kind of peachy color here is Ferry Lake identifying that's a natural environment. This topography and wetlands of the site. Soils information, which is a sandy loam. And some site images here, this is the existing structure, um, that houses the business. And then, uh, from where I was just standing, looking at the business, I'm looking back, it's kind of a north, north, east direction here towards county ninety-five. Um, so it's kind of a long driveway coming off the county road. Just identifying all the parking area that exists, um, on the site. Additional, looking the other way, just some additional space for parking of vehicles. Um, just an efficient, additional view of the existing structure here. This cone is meant to represent the front corner of the addition, and it'll come along the front here, there'll be a corner over here and it'll connect along the back. Um, so just another view of it kind of. Um, so just another view, it'll kinda come, can you see my mouse? Yeah, this area here will come out towards where I'm standing and connect over to where this cone is. Um, they have fuels, uh, fluid storage currently available on the site, we noticed a couple spots where they're storing stuff. And here, I'm on the backside of that existing structure, so off to the left-hand side here is where that addition will go and then wrap around the front. Um, I'm out on county ninety-five here, looking southwest back into the property. And then, this is looking east down county ninety-five and then kinda looking northwest down county ninety-five. The access is kinda like right in the curve of ninety-five. All right, application considerations, one is the use in conformance with the purposes of the comprehensive plan. Land use guiding principle number one states to promote and guide the orderly development and growth in Todd County in a fair and common sense manner. Guiding principle number five states to control the disposal of solid chemical and hazardous waste in the county. Economic development guiding principle number four, to promote, promote, protect and support existing business and agriculture. So ensure that ordinance are conducive to conducting business and presume that future economic growth will come from businesses that currently exist. Two, that the establishment of the condition use not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property. This is an existing established business with the operation site greater than five hundred feet off a paved county highway, there should be no impacts to the development nor the improvement of surrounding properties. Three, the applicant in the opinion of the planning commission has demonstrated a need for the proposed use and is reasonably related to the overall needs of the county and to the existing land use. This is an established business within the county, granting a new conditional use permit will allow for the expansion of the existing business. The county comprehensive plan states that the county shall support existing businesses. Four, the use will not create an excessive burden on infrastructure, including parks, schools, streets. And other public, uh, facilities and utilities would serve or are proposed to serve the area. There is a public park approximately a quarter mile to the east of the site, there are no other public infrastructure in the area that will impacted. Will be impacted by the request, nor are there any expected impacts to the local park. Five, the use will not create a pollution hazard or other detrimental environmental effects both during and after construction. Effects to be considered shall include but not limited to soil erosion and sedimentation, pollution or other degradation of surface water and groundwater supplies, impact on water supply and adequacy of sewage treatment. Pollution hazards and environmental concerns are more associated with the operation of the business itself. Hazardous waste, uh, hazardous waste must be properly collected and contained. This will reduce the impact on ground and surface waters, the site is located within shoreline zoning of Ferry Lake. Six, adequate measures have been or will be taken to sufficiently minimize traffic congestion and provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. There could be an increase in traffic to and from the site with expansion of the business, the access to the site comes from paved county highway. There's a large gravel parking area on this site that allows for off-street parking and loading and unloading space. Seven, adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, glare, appearance and vibration so that none of these will constitute a public nuisance. Considerations should be given to screening of some of the activities on the site, this will reduce noise and glare and, uh, improve the appearance of the site. There are minimal nuisance characteristics that currently exist on the site. The intensity of the proposed use is not inconsistent with the purposes of the ordinance and the purposes of zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. Auto repair businesses are identified as a conditional use in shoreline zoning. Recommendation would be a motion to recommend approval to the county board of commissioners. With, uh, four conditions, one, off-street parking shall be provided for all business traffic, two, um, all business signage shall be placed outside the road right of way. Three, all waste and automotive fluids must be disposed of in a manner that complies with all applicable federal, state and local standards and four. That the applicant abide by all the applica- applicable federal, state and local standards. That's my staff report.
Any correspondence?
Nope, we had none.
All right, at this time, we will open it up for public comment. Any public comment? Well, I guess we'll close the public comment period. Open it up for board discussion.
I visited this site and, um, impact on surrounding properties, it looks like it's surrounded by fields, so there shouldn't be anything. That can really worry about there, public nuisance considerations, um, it already exists as a repair shop, so anything that already exists. Any, any kind of things that are there should already exist and be handled. It is zone shoreline, but it does follow the precedent with a CUP. And there are wetlands nearby, they're a little ways off, um, which, you know, could raise concerns, but it does appear to be managed. Right now, managed well with the proper, uh, handling of waste and stuff, so I personally could see no issue with anything.
Yeah, we're, we're registered with the state for like our waste oil and antifreeze protocol or whatever and. And, uh, so every year we have to re-up that with them, which is pretty much only waste products that we have. Uh, and we're not really, not looking to expand the business or like add any more techs or anything like that, it's more. A lot of the projects that we work on take, motor jobs and things like that are taking much longer, so especially with the supply chain and parts. Issues, so it's more, some of the projects stay in there for three, four weeks, sometimes months on end. So instead of working outside, it'd be nice to have room to have other projects, the in and out stuff while the bigger ones are. Being worked on is more or less why we're trying to add space.
All right.
What do you really work on?
Uh, diesel pickups.
Diesel pickups?
Yep, that's, uh, we started out, uh, back in two thousand thirteen, uh, is when I bought the property and we pretty much opened the doors. There was an existing, uh, tractor repair shop there, so he had the shop. Set up to work out of basically just half of it, we've expanded and, and, uh, finished off the rest of it over the years or whatever, but, uh. Before we made it commercial more or less, but, um, uh, so. When we opened, we were small engines, kinda general automotive, motorcycles, things like that. Uh, a couple years in, we kinda started working into the diesel side and, and now that's, that's the only thing we'll take on is. And just pickups, basically diesel pickups, yep.
That, my, uh, interpretation, it was, it was something that was not to really expand the business, but just to make it more convenient.
Right, yes, basically.
Of the business, it doesn't really look like it's gonna expand much.
No.
Not according to any of these items that we have to look at, I will kinda, as a side note, say it's a, it's a very neat property. It's got a very, it's a very interesting property, we did look around a little bit and that.
Yeah.
Got a lot of character, it's got, it's got a lot of automotive and, um, kinda gearhead type feel to it more than just a shop. It's got a lot of stuff for people to go look at and stuff, so it's kind of a, it's kind of a neat place. Very well, very well maintained, I'd say right now, too.
Thanks.
All right, any other?
I, I'd heard of. Hot and repair, working on diesel trucks and pickups, I never knew where that came with that.
Yeah, to be honest, we've never, still don't advertise.
Yeah.
And we, yeah, wouldn't people keep up if we did? We've, like I said, we've been in business for, what, eleven, twelve years now and, uh. People come from quite a ways away, actually, there's lack of diesel shop, pickup diesel repair shops that are. Fair and honest, we'll say, and, uh, but yeah, we got people that come from. Sometimes, sometimes even other states, honestly, but, and, uh, but yeah, haven't advertised, wouldn't people keep up if we did, we're having a hard time. Keeping up with what we got going on with the couple guys that we have working and myself, so.
That's good.
How many expectation? How many square feet is your shop presently?
Uh, I don't do the math, uh, it's, uh, a hundred and eight feet wide by about. Sixty deep, maybe fifty-eight deep.
What are you adding on?
Uh, twenty-six hundred, I think.
Yeah, it was like twenty-six fifty or something. So kinda more than doubling the overall size.
It didn't look like that much on the drawing, that's why I was kinda asking.
I guess I can do the math, but you said one oh eight by sixteen.
Utilizes part of, or existing part to make it deeper, is that kinda the?
I was gonna say, I don't think it's doubling.
My math was wrong, yeah, you're at about sixty-five hundred square feet now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
And so, expanding by about half.
Sure, what was that? I missed the question.
I just made the comment that it looks like it makes, it u- it utilizes the existing, part of the existing structure to make it deeper, so you could probably stack them a little bit.
Yeah, so right now, the depth of that particular part of the shop is forty feet, while. A normal vehicle or pickup, I should say, it's, you have lots of room in front and back, but there's not enough to pull a second one in, so that's why we're. Trying to come out forward so we can have two deep in each of those bays, basically, so have the longer, or the projects that are gonna take longer in front and then. Behind, you can have smaller in and out type things, so.
Yeah, you get an extended cab diesel in there or something with a long box.
Yeah. They take up real estate for sure.
You're not gonna put two of them, one in front of the other.
All right, any other questions, comments from the board? If not, do we have a?
I've moved to approve the CUP with the conditions.
All right, we got a motion by Andy to recommend approval with the four conditions.
I'll second that.
Second by Ken.
Roll call Ken?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Lloyd, I'm sorry, Andy?
Yes.
Jim.
Yes. Motion carried, goes to the commissioners on the seventeenth, you can be present if you like, but you don't have to be.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
You, good luck.
Thank you.
I have nothing else for you tonight, but I will just say, prepare, be prepared to talk cannabis ordinance next month. So.
Do we have to sample it, or?
Yeah, I don't know that that's required.
You might bring a sample.
All right, that's it otherwise.
Can we, um, do something with those shades back there?
Like, well, hopefully we can turn the room next month, but if we have to go this way, I'll ask Cory about that. Cause it is terrible this time, well, it's, it's fine now, but.
He was moving, oh damn, they're hugging me and then all of a sudden he moved back and I got him.
Right, yeah, they need to be more like, like the darkening curtains, not just the ones that. Yeah, they really are. All right, we'll make note of that and I'll mention it to Cory.
Anybody have anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
We got a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Yeah.
Second, motion by Ken, second by Roger, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, meeting adjourned. It's not two o'clock.
We have these long meetings, Susan happy to have that coffee pot.